Okay, so I'll call this budget hearing to order. And will you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, are there any changes to the agenda? All right, not seeing anyone. Is Laurel logged in? Because I don't see her.
I am here. I may not be able to join via Zoom.
Okay.
There is a technology issue at home, and so I gave up my Zoom computer. I'm trying to get this one to work. Don't know.
Okay, that's fine. I just want, when it comes to roll call vote, or if there's anything like that, I just want to make sure that I don't forget.
She's in the music room with myself, Charlie, and Laurel. Charlie is logged in, but it won't be captured by my audio stream, so if you do a roll call, we'll be fine.
Okay, good. Ruben?
Just as I was looking at the order here, I see that we have the budget hearing. So we have the budget hearing first, and then during that budget hearing, if there is any sort of warrant article changes, we would do it right then and there. And then, of course, after, we would close the budget hearing out and then make the recommendate, well, people's decisions on whether they support those. So the order is a little bit out of order.
Okay.
Number five, for instance, could go right at the end of the budget hearing.
So put five right after two. We're going to count differently today. Okay.
Is during the school board meeting.
What was that?
During the school board meeting, and changes to the warrant articles are during hearing.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I think I heard what Carrie was saying there.
Yeah.
Yes, you heard me, Marcia?
I think so. I think I heard what you said. Is there any changes? It has to be done during the public hearing portion, and then the voting comes after.
Right, so you would close the budget hearing?
Right.
And then the nominations, and whether you're in favor or support the warrant article or not, happens during the school board meeting. So no changes can be made to the warrant article once the hearing is closed.
Is closed.
But whether you're in favor or not happens during the school board meeting.
School board meeting. Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So we are now ready to be in the public hearing for the budget, the budget hearing.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here for the budget hearing. Today is January 14, 2021, and we, this year, have actually fewer warrant articles than we have in the last several years. So I think that they'll be fairly straightforward and clear. And one of them, I think, might need a little more explanation than usual, and I'll try to be very clear during that timeframe. Why don't we go over all of these? I'll be emceeing this part of the evening, and that will look over some of the data from the, historical data really, from the district, both in population and spending and so forth. We'll read the articles verbatim, just to make sure that everyone hears exactly what is being said. And then we'll also go in and talk a little bit about each of the warrant articles. And certainly, the longest of them will be the second warrant article about the budget, although that one's fairly straightforward this year as well. All right, so we continue. In general, this first slide right here shows some historical information on staffing. You can see that we have gone up a little bit in the last couple of years, that those numbers really have more to do with instructional associates because of special education. Also, some custodians, this year, we have added even to that fleet for next year in order to make sure that we're providing the best environment, clean environment that we possibly can within our schools. And so with that as well, we have some other, another slide later on that you'll see some of those additions to staffing. There were some part-time positions that are being added here and there that add up to full-time positions. Overall, we stay fairly consistent with what our staffing has been. Our enrollment, however, has taken, well, it's been fairly stable for several years. So really, it's been flat since 2015, 16 school year. Some of that has to do with, even though we've had declining enrollment, we've increased our numbers in preschool, which we think is a good solution. And the use of money, because the data definitely says across the nation that at the very least, every dollar you invest in preschool or early childhood learning that is of quality, that you will get at least $2 kind of back in return later on down the road, usually about 15 years down the road, but that's why it's an investment. Places that have more poverty, perhaps, around the areas in the inner city and so forth, would have a much higher return on that investment, but still, a $2 return, a dollar investment is really smart and good. The decrease this year, that's going to come into play with maybe some questions that might arise later on, largely due to the situation we are currently in with COVID. We had approximately 144 fewer students in Ridge this year, and about 20, 20 to 21, 22 students in Jaffrey that were lower, mostly in the elementary areas, but some in the middle school and high school as well. But when it comes to Ridge students, the majority of those were in elementary. Just back on that last slide, you don't have to go back there, but just on the last slide, we are projecting that about 50% of the individuals will come back from after this year, assuming that next year is a more typical year. Cost per pupil, this is a really important slide. You can see the trends or the lack thereof over the course of years for all of these local schools, including ourselves, and then, of course, comparing it to the state average. And you'll see that we've always hovered around the state average, really. And this year, I think we've, this past year, because I think we've done a very good job budgeting and making sure that we've been fiscally responsible, we really fell about $1,500 below the state average. Different people look at that different ways. You know, some say, great, you're being fiscally responsible. Others will say, why aren't we spending more on education? There's, you know, you can look at Manad, not Conval, certainly, you know, Fall Mountain, and even the state average and say, wow, what could we do? Like, for instance, let's take Conval, the highest one out there. If we had $4,500 per student, you know, more, you know, which of course would be another $4 million or $5 million to the budget, you know, what could you do for education? So some people do think that way. We've been really trying to make sure that we budget what we need and that we, but not sacrificing growth and innovation as we go along. And I believe that we are in the process of being able to innovate and do so at a cost that is reasonable for our taxpayers. So Article One, this is a short one, and I'll read it. To choose the following school district officers: A, moderator, a one-year term. B, one Ridge school board member, which is a three-year term. C, one Jaffrey school board member, three-year term. And the blue states person's interested in being a candidate for school district offices may file starting Wednesday, that's next week, January 20, 2021. And the deadline for filing is 5:00 PM on Friday, January 29, 2021. And if you're wishing to file, you should contact the school district at that number, 532-8122. Article Two. Shall the school district vote to raise an appropriate and operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately? The amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling $26,768,736. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $27,142,266,000, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the school district or by law or the governing body, and may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13,10, and 16 to take up the issue of the revised operating budget only. And to pass this, you just need a majority vote. We don't have the recommendation as of yet. That will come later. And the estimated tax impact of passing this article, as you can see there, is $0.81 for $1,000 for Jaffrey and $1.85 for $1,000 for Ridge. These are estimated through formulas that we use. And of course, not passing this would result in a higher budget and higher taxes as a result. And you can see those there, $120, $0.23 per $1,000 for Jaffrey and $2.20 per $1,000 in assessment for Ridge. This operating budget warrant article does not include appropriations contained in any other warrant articles. So I will discuss this a little bit, if that's okay. Basically, we have a default budget, first and foremost. So if this does not get approved, we go to the default budget, which is a fair amount higher than the proposed budget. This year, we were able to, we had the default budget. We were to go and take a look at the budget and see what we could do to get it to a spot where it was more in line with our actual spending. Every year, we think we can do more and more and better in that area, but this year, we, you saw the numbers that we had come up with. You can see that what's increased, and these are fairly substantial increases this year. The New Hampshire retirement rates increased. That was about $400,000, a little bit above that. The, both CBAs, so the JRSSA and the JREA, their salary increases are in those. That's about $400, $450,000 there combined. Retiree buybacks of a couple hundred thousand dollars. Health insurance rates increased. We actually did have a halfway, because of some good negotiations from the boards and the JREA and the JRSSA, we do have health plans that tend to not increase as significantly from year to year. You know, it does vary from year to year, but we have about a 2, a 2.5% increase in health insurance, and that's very good, since the average was much higher than that in our pool. And then lane changes, and of course, the instructional associates we were talking about adding, because those are necessary due to legal documents, IEPs. And then there's some decreases, but those decreases don't add up to as much as what the increases are. You can see some of the changes there from last year's approved budget. Again, the approved budget is the budget that you vote on in Article Two. The adopted budget, you see that language once in a while. That's the adopted. The adopted budget is what the default budget is based off of, which takes in consideration a lot of the warrant articles that pass if they have financial implications. And so when you look down at the bottom part, that's the difference between the language between the approved and the adopted. The voters in Article Two are voting on the approved or what would be the approved budget once it's been approved. And you can see that there is about a, in the general fund, the part that impacts taxes, about a little bit less than a 2% increase. We'll show where the percentages are with our spending in the general fund later on. And there's some revenue increases as well there as well for the total operating budget of 2.1% of an increase. And you can see that it would be a much more, a greater increase if Article Two did not pass. These are just graphs. There's a pictorial version of what we just talked about year over year. And this is the general fund again. We put both of those in there because the approved general fund is the part of the budget that impacts directly, anyway, your taxes. Certainly, there are other things that come into play. And the breakdown would be, last year, the breakdown was more 25, 75, 25, all other spending and 75% staffing. This year, it's more like a 77 or 78% to 22% change there. You can see salaries and benefits, those do go up every year again. New Hampshire Retirement is within that, and that was a mandatory increase of almost, you know, not quite, but a half a million dollars that we needed to swallow this year. And here are some notable personnel changes. I'll talk more about some other changes briefly after, you know, these. But these are to increase efficiency, productivity, and to really just help us better, to run better. These are more support staff types of roles. One of them that has to do with the .5 secretary. That role is for the purpose of going after more revenue. So we anticipate that by adding that and doing some, changing some of our workflow around and going after Medicaid billing after some changes have been made over the last couple of years, that we should increase our revenue by a minimum of $150,000, which certainly offsets some of these expenses. Other notable changes that you wouldn't really see in this area, I mean, these are dollar changes. Certainly, if you had been following the presentations from before and on the Saturday that we had, some conversations about what, some changes at the school, largely at the secondary level, along with, you know, world language, with STEM education, with guidance. We've been able to move positions around in order to, I think, improve our effectiveness down the road, but also provide our learners with a better and more current education for not anything different in the, we're not, without not adding extra positions and adding on to the budget. So it's being more creative with how we've been going about things with personnel. And that's the, I mean, the majority of that budget is staffing. At this point in time, I'll stop and ask if there's any questions or comments on Article Two. We will be talking about tax impact after all of the articles have been read through.
Patty?
Nick, do you see anything in the public at all?
Just to be clear, this is also an opportunity for anybody who's in the public to make a comment, correct?
Right, public.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, just to let everybody know, if you would like to make some sort of public comment, you know, something like that, you can use the hand raise feature. In order to do so, you just look at your screen and think at the bottom, this is raised hand. You click that, we'll be able to acknowledge you and enable your audio. And then if you could just say your first name, last name, and your town of residence so that we can log it for the public comment. So yeah, if anybody has any questions on the budget, if what was just presented, feel free to raise your hand via Zoom, and we can acknowledge your comment.
Patty, you have something?
I see Patty has a question or a comment.
More of a very quick comment. I think our Saturday session was really helpful and illuminating in terms of areas that had been already looked at by the budget committee and, you know, continuing to ask finance for assistance in terms of assessing where, you know, where funds needed to be, where they ought to go. And I just want to thank them for their efforts, because I think that they've worked hard for a number of months, and I appreciate their conscientiousness with regard to the taxpayers' money, because it's a balance. It's got to be a balance between what kind of education we can deliver and the services and what we can afford. So I just want to make that appreciative comment. Thanks, Patty.
And on that note, just to add to that, during that Saturday session, not only was this number in the Article Two approved or decided to, you know, move forward with, at the same time, it was determined to also give back $200,000 to the taxpayers to offset taxes from the property purchase line that we have, that we had for, you know, five years, basically, is what the warrant article had said. So we were, because we don't have that in sight, we don't have any specific properties that we're looking at at this point in time, that, and to help ease, I think, the taxes that, you know, inevitably, due to property evaluations and other sorts of things, may, may increase. We wanted to make sure that we were offering that back to the taxpayers to offset taxes.
All right, I have not seen any.
Okay.
Okay.
The only thing I would say about this, and I think it's an important thing to state, is that if we do not have an increase in student enrollment next year, this was stated before during our sessions, that, you know, any, when you have a budget such as this, and the majority of it is staffing, when you don't have, when you have a student loss and a student decrease like that, you do have to start looking in the future at staffing more closely when it comes to budgeting. Article Three. Shall the school district adopt the revisions to RSA 198-4-B, comma, two, enacted in 2020, which allows the district to retain up to 5% of the district's net assessment in any year, allows the expenditure of any amount retained after the school board first holds a public hearing, and further requires the school board to include an annual reporting of the retained fund balance in its annual report to the district? This does not have an impact tax-wise directly, certainly. Anything that is retained and does not go back to offset taxes does have an impact. It's just that the money has already been voted on and accounted for. Now, what I would say about this is that during the 2019-2020 legislative session, as this says, there were revisions, or I guess, as you say, amended RSA 198-4-B, it pertains to the district's contingency fund. Prior to this amendment, the law allowed districts to retain to, up to 2.5% of the current fiscal year's net assessment. And this past year, actually, was the first year we actually did that, because just in case, because it was for emergency purposes. Now, the difference, there is a difference here, and it is important. So this 5% not only obviously doubles the amount that the school board could carry over if we even had those funds available, of course. It provides, and this is perhaps the most important part of this, it provides a whole lot more flexibility. So passing this article does not stop, you know, does not prevent the, I should say, not passing this article does not prevent the school district from continuing with the 2% or the 2.5% or something, you know, less than that, if they feel the need to carry over for emergency purposes. But passing this does several things. One, it allows the districts to retain, obviously, more money, up to 5% of the current fiscal year's net assessment. It also removes the prior restrictions on how a district can expend the retained money, and that's important. And it, along with that, one of the restrictions is it removes the requirement that the commissioner of education in New Hampshire needs to approve the expenditure. So you have a lot more leeway with how that money is used. So if you get into some difficulty in a certain area, whether it be with some facilities or personnel costs, or maybe even special ed costs that were not expected, the board would, with a public hearing, be able to expend those funds without going through a lot of red tape. And that type of flexibility is important for the school district to have. This is a very nice amendment, in my opinion, one that should definitely pass. Of course, you know, that's my opinion. The school board will take a vote on this later on as to whether they approve or think it should, you know, should pass or not. Any questions or thoughts regarding Article Three? All right, seeing none, I'll move on to Article Four. Now, Article Four, I'm going to read this, but I'm also going to tie it in with Article Three for conversation purposes. Article Four, shall the district, school district vote to raise and appropriate it up to, sorry, $25,000 to be placed in the expendable trust fund established in 2005, known as the Special Education Contingency Fund, created for the purpose of building a reserve for unanticipated special education costs with such amount to be funded from the June 30 fund balance available for transfer on July 1? Of course, we would need to have a fund balance in order for this to go forward, or else it doesn't matter. But I, we will have a $25,000 fund balance. Now, the reason, sometimes we put $50,000 in, sometimes we put $100,000 or more. The current fund has a little over $400,000 in it. Now, that might seem like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money. But it is important to note that the cost for special education in certain circumstances continues to rise. They certainly are not going down, and they're not staying even. And so depending on, and if we have, and we have had some this year as well, although often things balance out as people move in, sometimes people move out. We have had some very expensive placements and want to make certain that we have the funds to pay for those and obviously, everything else special ed related, when and if we were to get into a difficult situation where we were hit with several of these types of placements. $400,000 would typically pay for maybe three out-of-district placements on average, if you were talking about the more expensive ones that involve being off-site, so not coming to our location, spending overnight. There are a lot of reasons for that. Those can be over $300,000. And certainly, depends on what types of services are being asked. There are some à la carte services that can be added on to that. And so it doesn't take long to wipe that out. That being said, we're putting, we're putting forth a $25,000 number instead of $100,000 or $150,000, with the understanding that we'd like for Article Three to pass. Because Article Three, if it were to pass, would give the board some significant flexibility with how to utilize, I guess you would call, emergency funds. There would be less need for continuously increasing this right here, this specific fund. This is a, this is a warrant article, language-wise, that's almost identical to something we have on almost every year. The dollar amount changes. Any questions or comments regarding Article Four?
John does.
Yes, Ruben, I have.
Yes, Ruben, I have one comment. I think it's extraordinary that we, as a district, have been able to get our cost per student down to where we're $1,500 below the state average. And I think it's, you know, it just shows that a lot of people in our district, on our board, and in the administration are paying attention to to, to the limitations of, of our small communities and trying to pay attention to the taxpayers. And certainly, Article 4, the fact that it's only 25,000 this year, is in part a recognition that Article 3 will give us flexibility so that we can continue to budget tightly going forward. And that's really what I think has, has helped over the past few years. The people on the Budget Committee have really tried to budget much more tightly, and your collaboration in that has been much appreciated.
Thanks, John. So Nick, do you want to remind people that they can raise their hand?
Yeah, again, just a reminder to everybody, you know, we've had a few people come in since then, since our first article, but, you know, you, you're certainly welcome if you would like to make a public comment during this session to use the raised hand feature, which you can find at the bottom of your screen. You just click on that, your hand will be raised, and then we can address you that way. And then just first and last name in town of residence. Now, we, okay, we have one person right now, Erin.
So it's actually David Chamberlain from Jaffrey. I put two questions into the chat, but I guess you did not see them. I'm just curious what the average is over the last three years, what the district has returned to the towns of Jaffrey and Ridge for unused funds, and what the district, my second part of that is what the district has retained out of those unused funds.
If you give me just a second on that, Carrie has some spreadsheets over here that she's going to be pulling up, and we'll get you the answers to those.
I think I could answer that, Ruben.
Oh, if you, yeah, if you, I know I have ballpark figures, but I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, so yes.
Ballpark is fine.
This won't be exact numbers, but on average, it's between $750 million for the past, I think, four years. Sometimes it's a little bit less because the district spends some funds at the end of the year.
Okay.
And the amount retained for emergency has been $250,000.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I just saw the actual numbers. That's extremely accurate. Good job, Laurel.
We're not surprised.
Did we answer this? I'm sorry, did we answer the second part of that question?
$250,000.
Okay, yep.
No, I don't have anybody else at this time.
Okay. Go ahead, Ruben.
Okay, so Article 5, this is similar in structure. Shall the school district vote to raise and appropriate up to $350,000 to be placed in the SAU 47 Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund established in 1990, created for the reconstruction and repair of real estate buildings and capital equipment of the district, with such amount to be funded from the June 30th fund balance available for transfer on July 1? Similarly, though, it would be put on a ballot as not having a tax impact. It's no additional tax impact. Again, however, if it were passed, that $350,000 would not be being returned to the voters to offset taxes. So it is certainly a cost on that has already been voted on, but it's important to note that there is, there is a tax impact. It's just looking at it in a different way. If I go to talk about this a little bit, next slide, please. Just, these are just some examples of things that we've used that for 2016, 17, 17, and 18. You can read those right there. Continuing on 2018, 19, and, you know, we did some flooring in, in actually both of the schools, the elementary schools. And what we're really looking at right now, we've been putting paving out to bid and paving of all the schools. Now, it doesn't necessarily mean that we'll be able to do all the schools, but we need to find that out, that information. And we do have some money that's set aside this year for park, for parking purposes or paving. And we, we do have some money already in the fund and would like to have more to be able to really do the job that needs to be done. If we take the picture, the next picture, you know, our parking lots, it's not, it's, it's really not a mystery. Our parking lots have been in a difficult kind of state for some time. You know, Ridge Memorial Lot really isn't the best condition, but yet we have the most difficulty with the size, and so we've already started preparing the adjacent area to that for some future parking. We're just taking it a little bit by a little bit, doing our best we can. We've been working with some members of the town to help us out with this, to speed up our processes relative to putting out bids, and we've been really appreciative of especially our new superintendent of, of roads and so forth. I've really been appreciative of him, and I believe it's Todd Croto. Any questions or thoughts on that? Again, it, it comes out of money surplus of the year, if there is that much money. Obviously, if there isn't, it would be up to that.
There's no doubt, is there?
I have no doubt.
Thank you.
Okay.
But, John?
I don't know if we have any.
I, I just wanted to second what Ruben said about the collaboration of the town. It really has been great. Todd was a big help to the Facilities Committee and, and the Facilities Director and Ruben and this, and also just, you know, the town manager's willingness to to send them over and to, to help us out, so. That's been great.
Okay. I don't think there's anything. Is there anything in the chat or anything like that? No, not that I can see. Okay, so what will it cost? We have this slide every single year. Again, these are estimated. We've been fortunate. We've been able to give money back every single year, so these numbers aren't as high as, in, in reality. Nonetheless, we need to present the scenarios that we think, you know, if, if everything were zero and we were adding, putting this money into next year, this is what it would end up costing in the area of taxes, you know, roughly. And you can see that there is a difference between Jaffrey and Ridge. Now, that difference exists for a couple of different reasons, more so perhaps than before. I don't know if we go to the next slide. This, yeah, so if you can see the changes, this is a good slide, to see the changes back in 2018 equalized valuation and to the 2019 equalized valuation. So you can see that that's, that piece right there. There's been some reassessments this past year. That's the major change. That's the major shift. Now, is my understanding that property values in both towns went up. Nonetheless, when you look at the increases, Ridge's value is more. And then, the, on the other hand, we have the ADM, which is more still around the 50-50 mark. But it's important, this is an important piece to note, okay, because if we go back to that previous slide, that $1.85 for Ridge, estimated change per 100,000. Sorry, per 1,000. So when we have this year, we, we have money that comes in, and Jaffrey, you know, every year tends to get more in state aid. But Ridge and Jaffrey do get their own adequacy aid. Adequacy aid is dependent upon the students attending school, and also there's some variations with the profile of a student. So a student with special needs in a district is going to, the state is going to give more money to the town for that student. Same thing with they were Title I or free and reuse lunch, that would make a difference. And you'd get the, you know, the base of about 3,700 to 3,800, and then you'd have add-ons after that. So because of, you know, this has been a, a difficult year for everyone involved, and every, and there's been a lot of a lot of different thinking on the pandemic. There's been, you know, a lot with masks, with safety protocols, all those sorts of things. And we did have students as a result of some of the choices that were made for safety, and families decided that this was, by and large, not the way that they were going to go. Well, when you have 140 students from a town choose to go into another location, that decreases the amount of adequacy that comes back to that town. And that is in the tune of about 500 to 550,000. And if that 500, 550,000 were actually coming back to the town, it would reduce that 1.85 tax rate by about 70 cents, so it would be closer to 1.15. So that's a significant thing to understand as to why that number was it. So yes, while it was a large, largely due to the valuations, it also has to do with choice in where people decided to send their kids to school for the year, and how much aid comes back as a result. Any questions? Or?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, just a sec. Maximizing my zoom. Am I right? That the equalized value for Jaffrey from 2018 to 2019 went down?
Can you go to that next slide? So I can see that. All right, so do you have that?
So this is based on the apportionment.
So I'm going to have Carrie talk to these questions, because she loves to do that.
Yeah.
Yep, but here you go. I'll let, she'll come on over here.
Well, I just want to just clarify a couple of things. So this is the apportionment formula. So the apportionment formula is based on the equalized valuations from 2019. The adequacy aid is based on the 2020. So when you're looking at them, you're looking at two different years, when you're looking at the valuations.
I understand. I'm just looking at equalized value from 2018 to 2019 for Jaffrey.
Right, so the, that's preliminary right now, yep. For the 2021, 22. Oh, I'm sorry, hang on.
Equalized value.
Yep.
So from 18 to 19, equalized value in Jaffrey went down.
Correct.
Wow.
She did say that was correct, but she was also looking for some other information for you.
Yeah, I'm having a hard time with my Zoom open at the same time.
This is with or without utilities?
Without utilities, right.
Right. Right, so the apportionment is based off of. Okay. So that has me 2018 equalized valuation. It's on here.
This is without utilities.
It's my valuations. That's 2018. So here's my valuations 2018. So the apportionment formula is with utilities.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Okay. I stand corrected. The apportion, the apportionment formula is with utilities, and I'll let Carrie continue to talk.
Yeah, so the apportionment formula is based off of with utilities, and then when you calculate the taxes for the towns and the tax rate, it's based on the equal valuation without utilities. For the local, no, for the state portion, not the local portion, if I remember right. And if I open 2019. Here's 2019. So if I'm looking at that right, 536. 536. And that should be 55. 551, yep. So it's equalized valuation with utilities for the apportionment formula.
Okay. Other comments or questions on that article?
So again, just a reminder for anybody who's in the public attending this meeting, now, we are currently in a public hearing, meaning that, you know, members of the public have the ability to speak up and comment, ask questions. Just use the raised hand feature via Zoom, and we will address you that way. If you do choose to speak, if you could just use your first name, last name, and town of residence, we would appreciate it.
And that's what I was.
Okay.
But trying to pull this up, going back and forth.
All right.
Okay. Is, is that a no?
Yeah, I'm not seeing anything.
Okay, so what I was thinking of before, Laurel, just, just a quick comment, swept, swept is without the school-wide property tax there is without utilities.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, okay. I had that mixed up. All right, so if we could go down to the next slide, I believe that's the last of this. It's just to remind everyone that on the 3rd of February, which is Wednesday, February 3rd, at 6:30 PM at the RMS Gymnasium, we are going to have our deliberative session. There may be some other instructions that will come out, you know, concerning that in-person type of session, so, and how that will all work, but that's the timeframe that you can plan on attending the session, which will actually be going over the exact same thing we went over tonight, except that there's abilities to vote on different warrants or changes there.
So I don't know if you want to.
All right, I'm all set with this. Thank you.
Okay. So we would have any kind of changes at this point, if there were any? Seeing that we didn't get comments or only just a couple of questions, but not really.
Would we, Ruben, I have a question.
Yep. Yep.
We just advertised a bid for asphalt paving. And what are responses due?
There's a walkthrough next week and responses are due February 10th.
Okay, February 10th is when the responses are due. There's a walkthrough next week.
So after deliberative, okay, thank you.
After deliberative, yes, yeah, a week, one week exactly after deliberative.
Okay, so I am think guessing there are no changes then to these warrant articles based on conversation that's happened so far? So
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just, I want to ask a question of the board. In our request for proposals for asphalt paving, we have included the scope of work for the middle school, high school campus, Jeffrey Grade School and Ridge Memorial School and to replace the existing asphalt, including sidewalks. And we know that the amount of money that we have in our building maintenance reserve trust and the amount that we are asking for to be added to that trust will not cover the cost for all of that work.
Okay.
And I wonder if we want to entertain increasing the amount?
So in Article 5, that's where you're suggesting we increase that amount? So that we are sure we have enough to do all of the parking lots?
Or at least maybe two.
Two.
And including the expansion of the Ringe parking area.
Right. Okay, Patty?
I seem to recall prior conversations about not replacing certain things all at the same time so that we stagger their their lifetime and that we're not having to have to replace all the parking lots again at another point in time at the same time. So is there a possibility that we do two out of three this year? Or and stagger them so that they're not all failing at the same time and needing to replace them at all time? I don't know, it's just a thought.
Well
Patty?
I will say that the work proposed for Ringe current asphalt paving area is just an overlay, not removal and replacement, which is what is proposed for the middle school, high school and Jeffrey Grade School. So so the life will be different. Ridge Memorial compared to the Jeffrey buildings, Jeffrey campuses. But I also want to be sure that we have the funds available to prepare the area adjacent to the current Ridge Memorial School parking lot to expand that parking, because it seems to me that it is always jammed there and people park on the street, which is an issue for emergency services.
Right.
I think we're in agreement that they need to be done. I just don't, I was just, so I'm not arguing. I just wasn't sure how we could figure out a way of staggering it in some way so that wasn't a huge amount of money right now.
John?
Yeah, there has been a lot of action in terms of parking lots. We went from some very expensive proposals. I think it's three years ago, maybe four now. But what we're doing here is much more cost effective, obviously. Laurel, I like your proposal, particularly in the sense that it's aimed at trying to get the Ringe area prepared, which we're not talking, I guess, about paving that, right? Would it just be a question of leveling it and making it a gravel parking lot for now? Or what do you have in mind? And do you have a sense of how much we'd have to add to accomplish these additional goals?
Well, we have a ballpark estimate just to remove stumps and grade of $50,000, which doesn't, which doesn't accomplish buying material and spreading that and compacting it and making it suitable for parking.
Right.
What would you propose? Do you think 75 would cover?
I would propose that we would increase to 350 to 500,000.
All right, and I just want to, this is about retaining what would be left over, correct?
Correct. And adding it to the building maintenance reserve trust fund.
Right. Other thoughts, comments?
Yes, I would like to know do we have an estimate of what we're going to have at the end of the year? Because just arbitrarily increasing that number instead of prioritizing work.
Estimate what we will have at the end of the year.
Should should impact the tax rate as we explained earlier? So if we had some idea of what the surplus would be this year, I'd find it a lot easier to increase or not increase that to 300,000.
Let me see if I can get some information.
So I believe that the last information we had was projecting a surplus of 1.6 million, but that was with the understanding that there were some items that had not been accrued and covered.
It, yeah, it would, it looks like it's a possibility that, I mean, it's tough to tell with the encumbrances and what's being spent and not, but that we could have, could very feasibly have a 1.5 million dollar surplus.
So that even if
So in between a million and 1.5, somewhere around in there, probably closer to the 1.5.
Okay, so we're still looking at if we increase this to 500, we're still looking at a surplus that's anywhere between 750,000 and
I believe so. I believe our, our numbers that we have currently would suggest that.
All right, other thoughts, John?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, you know, that surplus I'm sure is affected by many things, but getting some money from the state this year and the changes wrought by the COVID-19 disruption make the year kind of unique.
Yeah, we were able to get, especially because we went out and actually got more funds just recently from the state. We were able to, so far, get close, close to 400,000.
That's great.
Which we've been utilizing and continue to utilize, yeah, for the purpose of safety and also technology and so forth. We have not received the new funds, which would have to be used differently.
Well, these these parking lots have been, you know, problematic for a long time. And we know that what we're talking about doing here is not going to fix all of the problems, but it would be a tremendous boost, I think, to all of our three campuses to have this work done. The parking lot at the middle school, high school is pretty rough. And to have that looking good again for a few years would be very welcome by the community, I think. And to see the Ringe parking lot expanded, solving that parking in the street problem and to get some land there where people could get off the road and park safely. I think that would be, again, you know, a big contribution to the community, so. I would be supportive.
Yeah, John, I'm glad you brought up the fact that this year is an anomaly that we would normally expect, you know, in terms of the surplus. But I also wanted to understand, at least publicly, what we're looking at relative to end of the year. And if this warrant article is approved, as Ruben said earlier, it does impact taxes. But in this particular year, it's a good year to increase this because we're going to have an out of surplus. So at the end of the year, we can still reduce the tax rate. So I would, I would agree with you, John. I think it's something that we need to do. We have an opportunity to do it. We probably won't have a similar opportunity in the future. So I would support it as well.
Patty?
This may sound off the cuff, but I hope the bids don't go up if we approve a higher dollar amount. I mean, I mean, it's not, if we approve higher amount and then the bids come in higher. I mean, it just seems like a blank check, but that's me.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Heidi.
Yeah, I just would agree with what John and Charlie have said. And I know, you know, RMS especially is such a safety issue. To have that additional parking would be, you know, really important. So I support the idea of increasing the dollar amount.
Okay. So Alicia?
I might as well chime in, right? Um, I do kind of second what Patty was saying. I wish we had a better idea of exactly what this work would cost us to get done. Having some more information around that would definitely be helpful. And I do think it is worth thinking about getting our parking lots on some sort of a rotation moving forward. I understand that the work being done is different, but I think it will be wise for us to spread any further maintenance out over different years. But as a parent of RMS, I know what that parking lot is like. It is a huge safety issue, even just picking up your kid. And I know that JGS also has some similar problems as well. So for the reason of safety, I definitely would support this, especially given the fact that we will have a surplus or we are expecting to have a surplus at the end of the year. So it seems like a good time to capitalize on that.
And like we said earlier, the proposals that have gone forward before were much more involved and expensive. And this is very reasonable to get things in good shape. So we've got the proposal rate for Article 5, raise it to 500,000. It sounds like people are in favor of making that change to the warrant article. So
Do we want to have any comment, public comment prior to that vote? Because it's still a public hearing?
Yes, if people would like comment, that's fine.
Again, so just to chat and then remind folks again, we are still in a public hearing. Currently, we are just going through the warrant calls and they've put a recommendation to increase. So if anybody has any comments, questions, whatever, please use the raise hand feature and you can be addressed that way. If you could just use first, last name and your town residents. All right, I am not seeing anything so far.
Okay. Oh. There's a comment here now.
Yeah, just a request to change so that people can see the title of board members instead of the shared screen.
Okay. All right. So I guess I'm ready to take a motion.
I vote we amend Article 5 to request $500,000 be added to the building maintenance reserve trust fund.
Okay, thank you, Laurel. And John?
I would second that.
All right, thank you, John. Um, so I'm going to vote. And this is simply on the change right now. So I'm going to take roll call vote, simply on the change to that article. All right, so Heidi?
Yes.
Thank you. Charlie? Thank you. Patty?
Yes.
Thank you, John?
Yes.
Thank you, Laurel.
Yes.
Thank you, Alicia.
Yes.
Thank you, and I say yes as well. So that changed Article 5 from 350 to 500 carries 700. Okay. So if there are no more public comments, I think we're ready to go back and vote on the articles themselves.
So we're going to need to close the hearing first. And then when you open the board meeting, we can do that.
Okay. All right, so if there's then nothing else for the public hearing, last, last peek there, Nick, make sure there's no more hands.
Yeah, so just one final chance for anybody to offer a public comment before we close the meeting, or sorry, the public comment in the public hearing portion of the meeting. You got to do it now or
Wait till deliberative.
Yeah. All right, I'm not seeing anything.
Okay, all right, then I'm going to close this public hearing, budget hearing. And we'll go into our board meeting. And now we'll vote on the warrant articles. All right, so started with Article 1. Do we have to vote on Article 1?
We need to start with Article 2.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we don't have to start with 1, do we? Okay, starting with Article 2. For the budget itself, the 26,768, 736, 26 billion, 768,736 for the budget. So we'll call vote. Heidi?
Hi.
Thank you, Charlie.
Hi.
Thank you, Patty.
Hi.
Thank you, John.
Hi.
Thank you, Laurel.
Hi.
Thank you, Alicia.
Yes.
All right, and I say I as well, so that's 700. Article 3, to retain up to 5% of the district's net assessment for emergency purposes. We'll call vote, mix it up, go with Alicia this time.
Yeah.
Thank you, Laurel.
Yes.
Thank you, John.
Yes.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yes.
Thank you, Patty.
Hi.
Thank you, Heidi.
Hi.
Thank you, and I say I as well, so that's 700. Onto Article 4, it is the Special Ed Continency Fund to retain 25, up to 25,000. Let's see, how about Charlie?
Yes.
Thank you. John?
Yes.
Thank you. Patty?
Yes.
Thank you. Heidi?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Thank you, and Laurel?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, and that passes 700 or in favor of 700. And now we're on to Article 5, the one we just amended, which is at 500,000 in the Building Maintenance Capital Reserve. And Laurel?
Yes.
Thank you, John?
Yes.
Thank you, Alicia?
Yes.
Thank you, Heidi?
Yes.
Thank you, Patty? Thank you, and Charlie? And I say yes, and that again is 700. Okay. Warrant articles are done. So I believe we're at the consent agenda?
Uh, yeah, we have one item on there tonight, just to.
A resignation, yes?
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Laurel. Second? Sorry, who? Heidi? Okay, thank you, Laurel and Heidi. And roll call vote, Charlie?
Hi.
Thank you, Patty?
Hi.
Thank you, John?
Hi.
Thank you, Laurel?
Yes.
Thank you, Alicia?
Yes.
Thank you. Heidi, did I call your name?
Not yet.
Okay, Heidi?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'll say yes as well. So that's 700. Okay. So we're at Article Number Four on the agenda. Our discussion, when we were last had our board meeting, we said that if numbers seemed to go up in the community, that we would have a discussion. We also said with the changes that the superintendent, when it is about the school body, has the authority. And that we also, when things go are in the yellow and are in a substantial place, we would have a discussion. So we are going to have some discussion. First, we're going to have a presentation of the most current data that we have.
All right, well, thank you. As Marcia had put forward that we are here to, because our decision-making matrix says that when there's a shift like that and also because of the conversation we had at the last board meeting, when the decision at that point in time was to take no action and just continue on with what was previously voted upon, that we would, that that would happen unless, of course, we have some changes, some significant changes. And so that we would at least come back and have more conversation about it and to. And I think that's important. I think that's powerful. I think it's important that we have these conversations, that we look at everything from a variety of avenues or directions and so that we can be able to really make the best decision going forward. So tonight, what I'll do is I'm going to make a presentation. I'm going to show some information, some of what you've seen before, some, maybe some new types of information. And then we have some choices that we can, you know, make tonight. And also I'll give kind of what I believe would be a good decision going forward. And then the board can decide, you know, certainly as how to proceed from there. So if I can go to the second slide, we can see that if we're looking at Cheshire County, okay? So we're looking at Cheshire County. And we see that over the timeframe here, from when we went remote around in the November and then also to now. Also, I will say that if you were to look at today's data, that you would see that that went, that would be going upward again if you were to check on today's. So it shows that there's a minor drop, there was a minor drop for a period of time, and then it went up again. So.
That's for the state?
That's for the Cheshire County. You can see the dates down below. And it doesn't mean that that's, that's the January 1st information. That's what, that's just a couple of days ago. And it proceeds from there because we started this presentation a couple of days ago. Same thing for the PCR test positivity. Certainly those numbers are different on the side, but the same type of trending you can see. As there's more cases, there's also a higher positive, a higher rate of PCR test positivity. I think this is an important slide. And as we see over the timeframe over the last 14 days, we can look at Cheshire County. We can also look at our towns. And we can see that in Jeffrey and Ridge, while Cheshire County has moved up in that direction, both Jeffrey and Ridge have moved in that direction, contributing to that more so than some other communities. I think that, you know, Winchester in Cheshire County went up as well. Keene, certainly, they've had some, I think, an outbreak in a nursing home and some other areas. So that, that kind of increase there is important to note that, you know, we have, we, we hold in our two towns here, we hold some of that responsibility for that. Now, there's a lot of things that we can't, you know, as a, as a community. You can't, you can try and try to make sure you can have things going just right, making sure you're not, you're limiting the number of people around and so forth, and that happens. But there's also other things that we can do as a community to slow the spread. Mask wearing, social distancing, hand washing, the same things that we would do in school on a regular basis can be done in our communities as well. Currently, and those numbers in Jeffrey, 22 and 27, I believe those are up actually today by a couple more on each of those. Just looking at statewide data over time. Cases by age. See the large number of cases, largest numbers in that 20 to 25 range. Reason why we bring this in is because we are talking obviously about age ranges from zero to 80 because we're talking about community, we're talking about who's in our school as adults, we're talking about kids in school as well. Part of our conversation early on was just with this whole, the whole pandemic when it came out is like making sure that our hospitals were in good order. And this is a graph, this is not, this is something we were able to take off online. I don't think it's very accurate in talking with the nurses and their communication with Dr. Chan. That some of, they admit that there's some inaccuracies with the hospitalizations and their data collection around that. It was, it is the case that we, as long as, as much as we're aware, that certainly the hospitalizations were more earlier on when the virus was less known than currently. We do see that, again, this is a graph, hospitalization statewide. But the note that DHHS is not currently reporting statistics on their dashboard. And so we got this information from NHPR, New Hampshire Public Radio. Hospital capacity and ICU usage, this graph from the data that we have. You see that that top line would show the total number of inpatient beds across the state of New Hampshire. Then the line below that is the number of beds that are in use. So there, you know, there are some, there's a, there's a gap there certainly, but it's still a high level of usage. But then down below, you see the two lines of those that are either suspected to have COVID that are hospitalized and those who are have COVID hospitalized out of that. And the same thing, this is the exact same type of graph, but with ICU beds. Same trend. And as best as we could possibly get our hands on the information for Cheshire Medical Center and Menadna Community Hospital. The, for instance, we, the latest information that we had were out of 81 total beds, inpatient beds at Cheshire Med, about 66 were utilized and Menadna was, you know, about half utilized. You can see that in the COVID numbers, the Menadna numbers might not be correct with all those zeros. Again, the data is as best as we can. When we look at our school and absence due to illness, illness can look at, you know, it can be all types of illness. That's what that number is. Certainly, since we've been remote, the information comes in very differently. People are sick, sometimes they can continue to go and go to school remotely. Getting some information from the nurses as to if you look at the blue, red, yellow and green line, this gives you some information about the number of students who were sent home due to suspected COVID-19. Now, the overwhelming majority of them did not have COVID-19. But nonetheless, when we're in school and people have symptoms, our nurses are going to act in a, in a way that is going to be most cautious. Now, this information I asked to have because last time we talked about, you know, what are the numbers of truancy? And the majority of this is secondary. We heard last time that the number of kids were considered truant, you know, five full days. I believe 10 half-days. In the middle school is over 70 and in the high schools about 75. When you put the two together, you're getting around 140, 150 individuals. And that's a pretty high percentage of the total population. And that's, that's important to note within the conversation here. That we won two there of November, you can see that we were in person during that timeframe. The numbers remain lower. Once we hit remote, those numbers increased, got a little bit better, and then we're on an increase again. I do think that there have been some measures to reach out and get those students to, through the truancy process that we have to get those students back in, into the classes and to attend more often. But still, that's a lot of unexcused absences. Staff impact, so if we look at the times, you know, going across, you know, how many days within the month we were strained or critical or anything like that. You know, we've, we've been able to, and we talked about this before, we've been able to get by. And the, we've been strained in many cases a lot of the time. We've never really been into critical until I would say more recently. Certainly, right, you know, we've had the information we've had through pickup patrol and even before where that we had some decrease in individuals being able to perhaps attend. That's, that's part of the reason why we went remote in that November timeframe, more for staffing purposes. And then we've rolled out the pickup patrol for our staff and, you know, over time, we've been getting better data. It's not all perfect yet. It's getting closer and closer. The last couple of days, we've seen that the majority of individuals are cleared, they're able to come. There, there is a, that red number there that they're not cleared, meaning they could have symptoms, they could have traveled and still been in that quarantine time that we talked about. There are some accounts that are not set up. Those really aren't, those sometimes are the coaches more often. And so we're working on that, but most of the teachers and the support staff have set up their, their areas. We look at that by, well, I guess that shows you right there where, where the majority of those blues are right there. If we look at the schools, the first several, I think, where all the, most of the green is. Rins Memorial School, you know, has some, you know, that aren't cleared. The majority of those who are answering are cleared. Same thing with JGS. The middle high school, as I was looking at information and talking with the administration today, the administration would consider that they are strained at the middle school, high school. Does not, they don't believe critical, they have been able to secure several substitutes. Nonetheless, it's tight and it's about, you know, we've, we've been in this area before at the middle school, high school and continued on, and that would be where we're at, you know, if we were to go back according to information we have right now. SAU, you know, has some similar areas, we have some people who are out and then some people, you know, the majority, of course, who are here. Other things to consider, you know, reviewing some of the literature. Actually, there's been a lot more, well, I wouldn't say a lot more, a fair amount more written on this exact topic over the last month. I think that there have been, there's been at least one study in the United States and certainly some studies abroad, Iceland, other parts of Europe. And so what, and looking at a variety of sources, I mean, you're talking about new sources who are also, they're doing their own research on this as well. And just to check to make sure that they have some good sources that they're getting their information from. Trying to get a, some conservative sources as well as some more, you know, perhaps what would be considered liberal sources. You'll see I have CNN there, US News. It's, you know, they, they're all actually saying something very similar right now. And so some of these things that they're saying are children can spread, but not at the same rate as adults. Schools don't appear to be increasing community spread. That was out of a study in Washington and Michigan. It is important because I put in parentheses here that this research was done during low to moderate community spread. Again, the spread that they, that some of these places in articles are saying, you know, are happening is when certain, certain behaviors are not being enforced, such as mask wearing and social distancing. There are limited signs, a quote from that CNN one that kind of summarizes a lot of what they were saying. But that increases cases among, the increased cases among school-aged children and teens that it preceded, when that happened, that it preceded increases in other age groups. However, they do have information that would suggest that increases with people in COVID, with people with 18 and 24, that when those populations increase, those are the populations that tend to have more, create more community spread. That makes sense through a little more mobile, perhaps, a little more social with a larger variety of individuals. Other considerations, I think we have to go back to our mission. Our mission is to inspire, engage, empower all learners to thrive in their lives and communities. So we have to ask ourselves, are we doing that? We have to ask ourselves, are we doing what is best for our learners so that they can thrive in their lives and community? Now, I look at remote learning and I think, you know, we've received, I forwarded the board everything that I've received from both staff, from community members, from students. This has been, there's been a lot of opinions and thought provided to us over the last couple of days. The majority of it in one direction, but some variation. You know, one thing that I will say is that, yes, you know, the, a lot of the comments are, you know, the remote learning has been difficult for our learners. I will say that there is real value in our learners acquiring the skills to learn in this way, anytime and in any location. It's going to be a learning, an approach to learning that is going to be accessible to them for a long, long time. And it's ways that they'll be able to, in their jobs, be able to go and take webinars and do certification programs without going places, without spending tons of money. So it is valuable. I do think that there has been a lot of value. And I can say that though it's not been easy, I don't think it's been easy for anyone involved. It's just not remote learning and remote teaching is not easy. That our, our learners who have worked at applying themselves during this time, even if it's been very difficult, have gained as a result in different ways. In-person learning, we've said from the beginning, we believe this is the best situation for the majority of learners. We believe that the first part of this year, you know, we were able to do that and do that to the, I think, the fullest that we were capable of doing. And so I feel that we did well there. We have to look at mental health. This is, this is big. We, we talked about COVID. We have to look at mental health. This is, this is big. We, we, we talk about COVID, we talk about the numbers, we talk about the increasing numbers. We also talk about the increased time of impact on our learners. The more we are not in person, the more that the socialization doesn't take place. And this is something that we have to take very seriously. And we have to balance, you know, what's most important because safety is very broad here. And you know, we, again, we've had testimony from kids actually that have written in and talked about the state of, you know, I get, whether it be depression or just depressed. The ideas of that their friends have, you know, there's been some perhaps self-harm involved and that's been spreading around. We, we know that on our end during this timeframe and what I'm about to say, you know, happens on a regular, you know, school year regardless, but perhaps not to the extent. We've had to monitor some, you know, we, we have the ability anyway as a school district because it's our computers, it's our networks, it's all our you know, the kids are using our, the logins for the school. We have the ability and software to monitor certain things that are of high risk and when kids search various sites that might not be healthy for them, we're able to intervene to, to connect with parents and to be able to help and support. I'll leave it at that. We, you know, there, it's, it's a, there's a time of isolation that is been happening and I know that, you know, we've had to isolate and, and sometimes and certainly anyone who's sick has to isolate. But our, our learners, I do believe the, I believe the parents and the adults that, and sorry, and the kids that have spoken saying that it's, this is painful. And this is certainly, there's quite a bit of literature out about this. And never mind, that was even before the certain state that we're in right now. I think we need to look at physical safety as part of this conversation and, you know, we, in the very beginning, did more than what the CDC had recommended. They said at least three feet, you know, six feet was preferable. Certainly the most of the world there, if you look at how they've been doing social distancing, it's been, well, like meter, a meter. Some are going two meters. We're close to that two-meter mark. Some schools in New Hampshire started off with the three-feet recommendations. They, you know, they shifted to six feet and so forth. We've required masks from the very beginning. You know, and certainly the, making sure that we have sanitization stations all over the place, access to water, soap and water. We need to make sure that as our, you know, whenever we come back, that we have the proper hand washing, that we keep on pushing that and you know, we, we know, we've had these conversations before about air purification systems and putting that in and just, you know, having an actual device that's continuously fighting and attacking actually the droplets in the air, you know, that's important to note that it's ionizing that, that those droplets, not, not eradicating it, but significantly decreasing. And so making it a healthier air environment. We've done a lot to mitigate the risk and I think we need to have faith in the mitigations. We have not had evidence of spread within our school. There isn't a whole lot of evidence that they're spreading in school anywhere, maybe one or two spaces, but when you look into the areas of spread or potential spread that could have occurred, it's because someone wasn't following the regulations, often adults, by the way. So, and it makes sense because adults are going to spread it more than these kids are. So we go to the next slide. And we have some options to consider. One, we could take no action. This means that the 19th of January remains as the return date. Two, you know, by looking at the pickup patrol information and to play it on the safer side of things, we could bring the elementary schools back on the 19th and postpone the secondary return until the start of the second quarter, which is in a couple of weeks. And then number three, we could remain in remote learning and revisit the data as we currently are doing future board meetings. And so you know, maybe there's something in between there, but these are the categories really of what can be done. I, in, you know, spending time going through this, looking at the numbers, looking at the increases, look at the increases in the area, reading through the literature on whether schools are adding to community spread and looking at our mission. Taking all of that, taking safety as a broader definition and you know, our mission here is to inspire and engage and empower all kids to thrive in their lives and community. And it is our job as educators, myself, and in this community, it's, it's the community's job as well to, to educate these kids. Again, remote learning is education. But educating them in the way that is going to help them thrive in their lives and community. And with the understanding that as we learn more about the virus and more is coming out from other, other countries again and from our own country, that as long as we're being safe or having the healthy practices for this timeframe and we're consistent in that, that this the schools are not adding to the community spread. We have a lot of examples of other schools, you know, I mean, you know, some are postponing. There, there's, there's schools around this area that are pushing back till February 1st or a little bit beyond. Some of this because of staffing, some of this just because of the numbers. Others have stayed in person the entire time. There's several of those throughout the state. And then others who are planning to start up again in this very region. My recommendation, and I know there will be discussion about this, but my recommendation is that we take no action tonight and that the 19th of January remains the return date for our students, for our learners. I think very much so. There's a significant, a significant situation with our learners' mental health. I think our data on you know, just the data that we've had for this timeframe, and I think our teachers have done a great job on remote, remote instruction. I think that they've worked hard at engaging people and, and they put the planning in and doing the best. Certainly some subject matters lend itself better to that. Doesn't change the fact that we have 150-plus individuals who are considered during this timeframe to be in the middle school and high school, elementary is a little bit different, to be truant. And we have a lot of names, you know, of kids and not that we categorize, that's not what we should be doing, but sometimes you have behavior patterns of students that you kind of watch and you try to make sure that you're staying on top of things and you have those who seemingly make their way through sometimes quietly and they sometimes, and it hasn't, hasn't been that way during remote learning for many of those students. And we can't ignore those. These kids need to be back in person. We've had success so far with our athletics. I'm not saying that there isn't going to be a time where there's a, a case and it could shut down a situation for, you know, a team for a period of time. That could happen. I'm also, as I say this and I recommend this, understanding that our nurses are going to be busy. They were busy beforehand. This is, this is not an easy thing to administer. We are going to have kids sent home. They are going to be quarantined. We are going to have adults that are going to have to quarantine. You know, the situations that we've had so far have been because of outside matters, whether it be travel or, or gatherings or what have you. But it's, it's, it's going to take place. Life, life happens like that and sometimes unexpected things happen and that's going to take place. And so we're going to have to be flexible. And there will be times possibly that we'll be asking a class to quarantine for two weeks. Very likely. Or we're going to need to, it's, it's, it's totally a potential that, hey, we have to in two weeks, say, we've got to, you know, go remote for a couple of weeks for middle school or for high school or for a portion of that. It is possible. And that's just the timeframe we're in. So I'm not, you know, that's just, that's just a reality. People need to understand that. And be flexible. And I'm going to be having to send emails home saying, we have a case in this place and it's happened on this date. And that's going to happen. Talking with other superintendents, you know, there's like a form, you know, sending them out left and right. That takes place. Most of the times, the, the people haven't been in the building for a period of time by the time they know, but, and, and cleaning has been taking place, but that, that's going to happen. I, I, you know, I could go on. I think that I'll, I'll stop.
Okay. If it's okay with the board, I'd like to take 15 minutes for public comment so that we hear what public has to say. I know that several emails have been sent to the superintendent and also to board members. And anything that was sent to the board members was shared with everyone and anything that was sent to the superintendent was shared with everyone. So if you are someone who either spoke at the last meeting, you know, I, this is just a continuation of that conversation. So I don't think anyone who's emailed in this past week or spoke at the last week's meeting, if we can hear from people who haven't had that opportunity yet, that would be good. Okay. So let's take 15 minutes and take public comment before we make a decision or don't, or not.
Yeah, I know, I know I've said this quite a bit throughout the meeting, but just to remind everybody, just in case we have anybody who's new that hasn't heard me say this a couple of times already. If you want to make a comment, you can use the handbrake feature through Zoom. That way we can address you by clicking on you. If you could just use your first and last name and your town of residence before you speak so that we can log everything appropriately. So first we have M. Barney.
Go ahead. Is she muted? She's muted.
She's muted. If you could just unmute yourself, Barney. She hasn't unmuted herself, so we'll, we'll put her off for now.
Okay.
So next we'll go to Shawna Smith.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hi. Um, thank you. Shawna Smith, Ringe, New Hampshire. As a teacher and a parent, like many others, I'm feeling many emotions. As a teacher, I know that kids benefit greatly emotionally, socially, and academically. By being in school, I do as well. I think that all teachers would agree, given the choice of a safe return, a safe environment, they too would, of course, choose to be in person. At the same time, we do need to recognize that we're facing large class sizes at the middle and high school and substantial level of COVID in our community. So as a parent, I know my kids look forward to a safe return to school. I'm not sure however, what the benefit would be to go back in person Tuesday, only to possibly have to go back remote soon after. I'm kind of worried about that challenge as well. It's, it's, it presents itself in a very different way, the back and forth and back and forth to kids. Um, I don't know, either waiting for levels to go down or possibly looking at a compromise of having cohorts that are in person half the week and remote half the week to reduce the amount of people in classrooms and in the building seems like a safer choice. I'm just wondering, does it have to be full remote or full in person? Is there something else to look at? Anyways, but thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Shawna.
So next we have Erica. It's the identity of Erica's Galaxy. I'd assume you're on a cellphone.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. So my name's Erica Hayes. I'm from Ringe. And I've been following this for quite some time. I'm actually a paramedic in a very high-COVID area, Framingham, Massachusetts. And I feel like there's a lot of misunderstanding as far as the safety as far as COVID is concerned. I do know that the risk factors for spreading is a lot lower when there's no active coughs involved. So doing the basics, six feet away, hand washing, social distancing, you've got a, only a 27% risk of contracting COVID, which is not that terrible. I know that my children and a lot of families in this area have been suffering royally. My kids are not doing well remote. I'm a single mother of four. I have two kids on IEPs. And it has been a struggle for me to work full-time as a paramedic and then try to come home from a 24-hour shift and be inadequate help to them. And I feel like education-wise, my children just, they're, they're not doing well. And they really would benefit from going back. And I know a lot of families feel this way. I've seen children threatening, threatening to quit school in general, just because they can't do it anymore. They're tired of it. So that's kind of all I wanted to say on the matter.
Thanks, Erica.
All right. Next we have Amanda Parsons.
Um, so those who know me at this meeting, I'm actually terrified of public speaking, but I felt like I really needed to share my thoughts and feelings about this as an educator and a parent. Um, so I did write something down and I'll try to make it quick. Um, I guess I'd like to start by saying as an educator, I do understand the concern my colleagues have about returning to in-person. I get the fear, I get the worry for themselves, for vulnerable family members. You know, their fear is not unfounded. And I also know they understand that our current remote model is not sustainable and that is increasingly detrimental to the emotional, mental, and social health of the young people within our school community. As educators, more so than almost any other essential workers that are currently risking their lives every day, we do have control over COVID protocols. I can go to Market Basket and I can see a dozen customers without masks on and I can't do anything about that. But in my classroom, I can tell that student to mask up and I can tell them to keep swimming. I can tell them they need to stand six feet apart. I can tell them they need to go talk to the nurse if they're not feeling well. I have control over that. So whatever someone's belief is, parents or otherwise, about these protocols, they understand. As parents, we understand how critical they are so our kids can stay in school. So as long as our district is implementing and adhering to strict COVID protocols, we have much more control over this than a lot of other job fields that are working right now every day with people, with each other. So we just, as educators, we just want to return safely to our classrooms, to be with our students. It's our job as adults to make sure that happens. And I'll be more succinct as a parent. Remote learning needs to end and we need to return to in-person. Watching my children break down into peers on a daily basis is incredibly painful. Their teachers are doing everything possible to make it work and it is just not working. We cannot do this to our children anymore. I urge the board to consider the devastating impact if this model continues that, and how it's going to affect our young people. So that's my two cents. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Amanda.
All right. Can I just get your town of residence real quick, Amanda?
Sorry, Winchonan. Sorry, Winchunin.
All right, we'll give M. Barney another try at this point.
Okay.
Hi, M. Barney, are you on with us right now? You have to unmute yourself, but we give you the ability to do so. I will say that she raised her hand probably through the presentation, so I don't know if she ended up having some issues or something, but once again, we're not getting it unmuted, so.
Okay.
I believe this next one is Alexis Rojer. It's kind of combined, so I think I cut that wrong.
Hi, yes, I'm actually Samantha Vaughn. My husband's Alexis Rojer, but we live in Ringe and I just wanted to touch upon something. My son is actually a preschool student. Who is only three years old. So he was attending those two and a half hour session four days a week. And you know, he was only going. He was in small groups. And so I always, I kind of question, you know, how necessary it was to keep the preschool kids in a remote learning session when it's already in such small groups and for short periods of time per day. And I also do want to reiterate how frustrating it is to see, you know, people in the community not taking COVID-19 seriously. Not wearing their mask at gas stations or in the stores. And feeling as though it's the kids who have to suffer, you know, in the end, education wise. So that's just something I wanted to just put forth as a kid who's not in elementary, middle, or high school, but in the preschool program.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next we have Laura Rosenthal.
Hi, I'm Laura Rosenthal. I teach at Jeffrey Grade School and live in Keene. And I guess, you know, I just wanted to say that I appreciate everybody's opinion and as a teacher, I miss the kids terribly and when I have gone to school a few days during the remote pods, it's been the best days of my last few months. That said, I really do appreciate and want to really get the board support and administration support that if there is not compliance in these, in the things, I mean, we as teachers deal with the different kids and differentiate depending on the grade. But when we have people not adhering, I would love to know that we have recourse because it's a concern. And I have, you know, not just maybe even the language of the mask, not just that we're wearing a mask, but that the science is that it covers our nose and our mouth, not just our mouth. I see lots of people walking around the buildings with their noses out and I feel like if we're saying that the reason it's safe to go back is because it's only 27% chance of getting it, which now you hear my voice shaking because I do have, my husband is 10 years older than me at home and I do have asthma and it is scary. But I am a teacher and I do want to be with my kids. But I do want to know that someone is going to walk into a room and say, put your mask over your nose. To everybody that works in the building, to bus drivers. I've seen, I see bus drivers in the Monatinoque region all the time and out in Keene with masks on. I see Jeffrey bus drivers with no mask. So it shouldn't fall on the teacher on duty to say something. So I guess what I want to know is starting Tuesday, if there's some real backing of the nine of you, I see nine pictures here, you know, that really say, let's get this done. Let's do this safely. That's all I got. Thank you. Thank you all.
All right, next we have Megan Perez.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm, I'm from Ringe, I'm a mother of two, and I watched my two beautiful girls kind of lose. My, my kindergartner tells me she doesn't want to go to school anymore. And she's, she's bright and fun and has always loved it, but for some reason, it's just, it's not the same. They don't get to see, we don't have family, friends, we don't have neighbors or anybody. We, we pretty much stuck to CDC rules and so my kids have just been themselves, all by themselves, day after day, and it's really, really affecting them. Emotionally, I feel like I'm losing them if they don't get back to school. I would have been fine if we had been going up to school up until this point to now take a break. But we've already been out for almost two months or over two months. I don't even know anymore. And it just, we have to do something. If it's going to school once or twice a week, I'd take it. My kids would take it. Just so they have something to look forward to, some other kids to talk to, you know, get real social experience, but also the learning. I'm not a teacher. I'm not good at it. And it's, it's hard when I say, well, we can make it fun. And she's like, no, you don't really make it fun. I'm trying, but I'm, I'm losing them. And I would really appreciate it if the board really takes it into consideration to let these kids go back in any way possible. Thank you.
Thank you. So Nick, that's been 15 minutes, but maybe, you know, one more because I didn't give kind of the heads up.
So right now I have two, I have three people who have their hands raised and one of them is M. Barney, so we can give her one more chance. And then if we just take the, you know, three hands that we have left and then so we'll try, I guess we'll save M. Barney for last. We'll just, hopefully she hears that we're trying to get her the opportunity. So next we have Mark Haley.
Well, Mark did speak last week. Has his opinion changed?
I guess I would say my opinion hasn't changed. I do have some separate things, but if you don't want to hear it, that's fine too.
Well, I guess I'm just trying to give as many people as we can opportunity.
Absolutely. No, I'm happy to sit back. I just didn't know how many other hands were up.
Let's give a few more people that have, haven't spoke.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mark.
So Kathy Mackey.
Hi there. My name's actually Alicia Mackey and I'm from Jeffrey. I'm a senior at Connet right now. And I just wanted to echo something that Mr. Duncan said a little bit earlier in the meeting about how the main goal of the district should always be to uphold our mission. And right now I really don't see that able to happen at all. You know, we're supposed to be inspired, but it's really hard when even our teachers don't want to be in the situation that we're in right now. And it's really hard to be engaged when, you know, we're talking through a screen and we can't see anybody. And you know, all of the clubs and organizations that we have aren't able to happen. They just cannot happen through Zoom. And so it's just been really difficult for me, as I'm sure it has been for every other student. And you know, I do see the risks. I've seen the devastating effects of COVID. But I just think that when you look at the risks, we should really be trying as hard as we can to get the kids in class because I don't know, I just, I don't think there's much learning going on in remote learning, to be honest with you. Right now, it's hard enough for kids to find the motivation with the way that the world is. It gets even harder when it's all online. So I just thought I'd put in a little bit of a student's perspective.
Thank you, Alicia.
All right. So just kind of an update on the hands raised tab for you, Marcia. There have been two more people that have added. So we kind of gave the final call. I don't know how you want to address it. We're not addressing it. We're currently at four people with hands raised. We have M. Barney, we have Mark Haley, and we have two others.
Well, I guess I would say, let's go to Margaret because we've been trying. And if she thinks she can unmute herself and we, we didn't get emails or she hasn't spoke before, so.
Okay. All right. So Margaret Barney, I'm just trying to give you one more chance to chime in publicly. I know you've had your hand raised for a while and we've been trying to get through to you. So I have given you the ability to unmute if you would like to make a public comment.
Not happening, huh?
Yeah, I'm not. Not getting that. All right. So yeah, it wasn't coming through, unfortunately. I don't know if she stepped away from the computer or what, but I gave her the ability to unmute. It wasn't happening, so.
Okay. So you say we have three people?
So with her not being eligible at this point, we have two more people and we had Mark Haley, but he dropped his hand, so I don't know if we.
Right. So let's take the two people and if those are not real long, then I'll give Mark his opportunity.
All right. So first we have Catherine McKay, I believe, McKay?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, Kathy McKay, Ringe. I also work at the middle school. I have to say, I'm a little shaky. As a cancer survivor, I am absolutely scared out of my mind to go back to school. I don't know what it would do to my body and I feel like the sacrificial lamb being thrown into it. I did work there in the fall. I did not feel safe. I saw things there that made me very uncomfortable and I felt lucky to get out of it without catching anything. With the numbers, the way they are right now and the different strains coming through that are more transmissible than the old one. I'm really scared. And I feel, I know how hard remote is. I understand that. I've been teaching it. But I feel like we're so close to the finish line. We're so close to having the vaccines. We're so close to everybody being able to go to school and be safe. That I feel like if we throw our hands up in the air now and give up, it's, it's all been pointless waste. So that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, Kathy.
Sarah Graham.
Hi, my name is Sarah Graham. I'm a Ringe resident and I also teach at the Jeffrey Ringe Middle School and I'm also a parent of a student at the middle school. I wanted to thank you all for revisiting this topic tonight. And I think everyone here agrees that in-person learning is the best. That's really not what we're discussing. What we're really trying to figure out is when we need to return to in-person learning. With the daily case numbers rising in Jeffrey and Ringe, and they have been since January 4th. That's concerning to me. There have been two positive COVID cases in the learning pods at our schools in January. And that also kind of raises a red flag for me because this is a relatively small group of people in those schools at this time. And if we're seeing cases in this environment, I feel like that's just going to kind of predict what we're going to see in the future. And I strongly urge the board to reconsider everyone's safety at this time and delay the return to in-person learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
All right. So again, just to get the update where we're at, we did have Mark had his hand raised at one point. We have one other person that's kicked up their hand. That's where we're at right now.
Right. And I said, we would take those two and then give Mark. He said he had a couple of points that he hadn't said before, so.
See, I'm Mark. I know your hands aren't raised, but I'll give you the ability to talk and you can go from there.
Thank you. Yeah. And luckily, other people have covered most of what I wanted to say tonight, so I'm much shorter than I was initially thinking. I mostly just want to say that if we are planning on going back, I think we need to actually revisit our model and look at an actual hybrid model and not what we have been calling the Jeffrey Ringe Hybrid Model, which is full in person with some options to be remote. The places where it's working well and what seems like would line up with many people as a compromise would be having limited numbers of people in the building with the Wednesday cleaning day being effective. And then actual consequences for, for folks who are not following mask mandates because we have been trying to enforce them. We've been in a pandemic for nearly a year now. We, we are past the point of free strikes. People's lives are at risk here and we need to have administration and like Laura said, the board's backing that, you know, the number of strikes now is one at the most and we need consequences for people who are not following these, whether they be staff members or students, because the number of students I have repeatedly given education to and, you know, sent to the office and head inside for recess for the exact same things over and over, that, that can't happen anymore. There's no more excuse for not knowing that you need to wear a mask, really. So you for the time, I appreciate you coming back to me, even though I spoke last time.
Right. Thanks, Mark. Okay. So I'd like to poll the board. You know, Ruben outlined three options and he recommended one. The three options were, you know, take no further action because we, we've made this decision and we think that that's the right one. One, the second one was, you know, maybe it's school specific. Some schools could go back, some don't. And then the third one was remain remote for a longer period. So I guess I just want to check in and poll people. Where are you? What are you thinking? So is there anyone who'd like to start?
I'll start.
Okay, Heidi, thank you.
I don't want to start because just again, this is, you know,
Yes.
I want everyone to know, all of the people who have emailed, all of the people who have spoken, all of the staff, people I worked with for many years, I am I don't like being in this position because I want to make you all happy. And I want to make the best decision for all of you. And I hear all of your concerns and to me, they're all such valid concerns. But I think that we need to try and we do need to go back to school right now. And I think that Laura and Mark made great points. I think that we need to absolutely be extremely strict about our mask rules. And if people can't follow them, then they need to stay home. It is just the way that it is. And I don't have a lot of tolerance for people not following it at this point. So you have my word that I certainly agree with you about that. People need to follow the rules. And if we're following the rules and we're doing everything that we've laid out, I really think that, given all of the I really think that, given all of the struggles and mental health issues and just this incredibly challenging unnatural way of being by being so isolated, I don't think, I think there are just great risks to that as well. So there is no perfect answer. I wish that there were. And I think that most certainly if we start to see that we're having trouble and we're seeing spread within our schools, of course, then things need to change rapidly. But yeah, I just think that we need to give this a try right now.
Thanks, Heidi. Alicia, did I see that you were going to speak?
Yeah, I was. Thank you. Yeah, I really feel very strongly that we need to stick with our original plan to return to school on the 19th. The parents who spoke, I really just appreciate you sharing your stories. Know that I just have so much empathy for you. It resonates with me so much. My third grader doesn't want to get out of bed in the morning and she loves school. And to all the teachers who are also parents, I don't know how you do it. You're amazing. Thank you. And really all of our teachers, you guys have done such a great job trying to engage your kids. But our kids are getting tired of this format. They're really growing weary of it. And at this point, the more other parents that I talk to who are sharing stories about their children, our kids are just surviving and they're not thriving and they need to be back in school. And so for that reason, I really feel very strongly, again, with the data that Ruben shared regarding truancy, that is seriously concerning to me. The mental health issue that we are very widely aware of. And we know that this situation is just making our children's mental health so much more challenging to be healthy. It's just impacting the problem in such a negative way. And it breaks my heart to hear those stories. And so I just, we need to get our kids back in school.
Thank you, Alicia. Anyone else? I don't know if you want comments. Go ahead, Laura.
Similar to Heidi, Alicia, it is an incredibly painful position to be in, to be a member of this board right now and to be in a position to have to make these decisions. But I am extremely concerned about truancy and ability to learn and engage socially. So I also believe that we need to stay the course.
Thanks, Laurel. Patty.
I reiterate my statements from past weeks that I do think we should stay the course too. And I do have great faith in our administrators and our teachers. And I have great faith in our families. I think that parents are so vitally important in mentoring their kids and coaching their kids and helping them build really strong social networks. And I think all of that is very important at this time. So if parents need resources, they are available. And we, you know, please reach out to the schools. We really, really need to come together. And I know it's cliche, but this is something that is, we're bigger than all of us. We can do it. And it's really important that we, that we work together to mitigate this as much as possible. I think that it is, the numbers are just going to continue and people really have to be mindful of how they behave outside of school and outside of their work environments and in their work environments. You know, this is just going to continue. And I'm really hopeful that the teachers can get their vaccines as soon as possible. I hear you, for those of you who have, you know, compromised immune systems, let's get you somehow up the line and get you covered faster than other folks who aren't as compromised. So believe me, we hear you. There is no question that in the last six to eight weeks, we haven't heard every view and we have heard it. It matters to us that we, we just need to do this for the kids.
Thanks, Patty. Charlie or John?
I'm still where I was at in the last meeting.
Okay, stay the course.
Which is, I echo everything that's been said so far. But right now, I think it's very important for students to get back in class. Those that want to be there, those that want to stay remote. We've given the superintendent the authority to take immediate action. If anything happens with the particular pro-farmer in school, I believe it's, in my mind anyway, it's probably safer being in school than it is to be out in public these days. So I'm not minimizing the risk to people, but I am saying that to balance the impact of high school to school with the ability to go to school in an environment such as we provided with all the safety measures that we've taken and believing I'm on board with enforcement of people not wearing masks, then we can take immediate action. But I believe the right thing to do for just the right now is to the hybrid model that you have before.
Okay. Thank you. Yep, go ahead, John.
All right, so we have spent the last couple of years talking quite a bit about school safety. And like a lot of schools, we've been looking at active shooter training and even hired a safety officer this year. Of course, that was before the pandemic hit. Now we're getting up to an approach of about 400,000 people dead. Of course, most of them aren't students. Most of them are older people. Although we are getting some scary stories about younger people. As I mentioned last time we met, a 41-year-old US congressman died honest before he could be sworn in. So I guess I would say I'm in favor, well, I do want to acknowledge the concern for mental health of our students and their needs. They need socialization. They need to have some support. And I'm leaving aside for the moment the problems that this creates for parents. I can't even imagine what that's like, working parents. It's got to be terrible. But you know what? These things happen and I don't think we can put the concerns of those parents ahead of the life safety issues of our teaching staff, our teachers, our administrators, principals, et cetera. But the students is another thing. The students and their mental health needs and their needs to have some kind of support more than what they're getting now in remote. I get that and I think as a part of our mission, that is a more serious issue. So in light of that, I would support Ruben's option number two. Bring back the elementary schools on the 19th and postpone the secondary. Although, to tell you the truth, even better than postponing the secondary until the second quarter. I think maybe we should go to two days a week in school. I know that was a suggestion made by at least one of the people who commented. It would reduce the number of people in the building and I think that would, would help. But that's just my, my perspective. A couple of things that I've been saying in the past, one of them about, well, I should say, I tried to reach out to talk to some teachers because I'm related to a teacher. My wife is a teacher. And I've spoken to her, of course, lots of times. But specifically on this, I didn't want to ask her opinion because it didn't seem like that was the right way to do it. So I did speak to some other teachers and I asked them, what about this comment that was made? I believe it was by the president of the teachers' union, Mark Haley, last time, about the lack of monitors in the hall. And to tell you the truth, we blew it on that one, I think. We talked last summer about having monitors who would be checking the bathrooms to make sure there weren't students congregating in the bathrooms. And we didn't come up with them. Staffing has been a problem everywhere and for everyone. By everyone, I mean every school district is having trouble getting substitutes. So where do you get the people to monitor the bathrooms? Well, we didn't get them and so we've left that unattended. That's part of our protocol. We're not enforcing. Same thing about transitions. We don't have anyone in the hallways apparently. And again, I got this from another teacher I spoke to. Because the teachers are busy cleaning their desks. They have to clean between each class, all of the desks in their room. They can't get help from the students because the chemicals that they use to clean the desks are deemed not to be safe for the students. And so the teachers run around cleaning the desks. There's no chance for them to go out in the hall and see whether students are keeping their masks on, whether they're trying to maintain social distancing. So I'll wrap up here, but my recommendation would be, recommendation number two that Ruben offered, postpone the secondary. But whenever we go back, whether it's Tuesday or whether it's at the beginning of the second quarter in the secondary. And I say in the secondary because I think it is a much more difficult thing with older students. I think we need to work harder to enforce the protocols that we identified and said we would enforce last summer. And we cannot hold our administrators, our principals and assistant principals responsible for not doing that when they don't have the staff to do it. And I, and then I'll wrap up by saying I would agree with the comment that's been made by a number of people about the need to enforce accountability on mask wear. To tell you the truth, I remember myself as a youngster, as a high school student, I could easily see myself having been one of the rebellious ones who didn't always wear his mask. So I don't blame students for that, you know? They're young and it's terrible wearing these masks. We all hate it, at least most of us do. And, but they've got to understand. And the only way I think is that there's accountability. If you don't wear your mask and you've already been talked to, you should be sent home and not allowed to come back the next day. And then when you do come back, there needs to be an agreement by you and your parents that, you know, that behavior is going to change. And if it doesn't, then you.
So did John just freeze or is that just me? Okay. Okay. All right, well, then I'll say my bit since he's frozen at this point. I agree that, you know, masks are essential. That's why we said they have to be worn all the time. And we need to make sure that they are. Everyone is responsible for that, even other students. If they see someone, just say, you know, cover your nose. We need to do that. And that's part of the culture. So, you know, I know that we're working on making sure that there's a greater capacity within the schools to help with situations like that. So we need to work, continue to work with that. But I must stay the course. We, we have a matrix or matrices, we have a couple, that we need to look at, continue the discussion when it says we need to continue the discussion and know that, you know, it could change in any, any moment. But for now, I think we stay the course and go with our plan. And yes, my heart breaks too. I mean, there were a couple of times tonight when I was on the edge of tears listening to people talk about how it's killing their, their children's spirit. That's the worst. So that's my thoughts. With that, you know, I've polled the board and six of the seven say stay the course. So I don't think we're changing anything. Heidi.
Marcia, I just saw that David Dustin said he could add something to the conversation if you're.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, if you want me to catch it, I'm happy to do that.
Sure, that would be great if he could do that. Thank you. Welcome back, John.
Thank you very much. I just, I wanted to take a moment because, you know, I really appreciated listening to the deliberative dialogue and people's concerns. And I'm really pleased, you know, that there was a deliberative process to sort of get a solution going forward. But many of the concerns that were shared were directed at the middle high school and specific concerns over procedures. And, you know, I just wanted to have the opportunity to put on, on the record for the board that we do take masking and other concerns very seriously at the middle high school. And speaking on behalf of the other administrators, whenever a teacher has referred a learner to us regarding masking concern or other violations, we have immediately addressed that concern at the, at the request of the teacher. We have had suspensions for that this year and sending learners home and had parent meetings with that regard. We can't address concerns that we don't know about. And some teachers and some teams have made decisions to provide three-strike rules, for example, at their discretion. Certainly, we, we're not in every classroom and I can't force a teacher to report a learner to me on the first instance if that's not going to be the direction they've chosen to take to support their learners in an age-appropriate way. But we stand ready, as we were before, to hold learners accountable with consequences and be in contact with families. That's, that's never been a question for us. And we have been very clear with our staff that we will continue to do that. And I will make that clear again tomorrow in communication with them. I will say that the vast majority of our learners are very good about masking. Basically all times, their masks do slip below their noses at times. That's the biggest thing we see is a nose that all of a sudden pops out. But on a simple request, they immediately return that above their nose. There's no intentionality to it that I can ever detect. And on the few times that we have seen it, we, you know, we react immediately. And in regards to the supervision of hallways and bathrooms, you know, that's an area that's exceedingly complicated to monitor, but we've done the best we can. The administration has been around during all transition times. We've purposefully booked already for next week several subs. We don't, we don't even have teachers out yet for next week that we're necessarily bringing subs in for. But part of our goal is to always have extra supervision ready to keep the hallways safe and to keep swinging through bathrooms and things like that. That doesn't mean that there aren't instances where learners go into the bathrooms together when they shouldn't be. But again, we immediately address that with consequences when we see it and do what we can to sort of address the behaviors. And we already have some plans in place to tighten down the supervision, you know, during the transition times in particular. So I'm not saying that there's no flaws whatsoever with our implementation, but I don't want the public to be sensing that somehow the administration or the teachers in the school aren't doing what they should. The vast majority are doing so. And, you know, I think that we have a good capacity to keep the learners safe and I'm excited to do that starting on Tuesday.
All right, thanks very much. All right. So I guess with that, we're ready to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Thank you, Patty.
Second Patty's motion.
Okay, thank you, Alicia. And with that, we are adjourned.